I'm going to call the meeting to order. I want to note that the school committee members are all here and that Lilly Reed is attending via the cellphone here. So she's a virtual member, which is unusual for school committee, but under orders, special action from the governor, elected bodies, local bodies can now do that during this particular period. So she's attending virtually, if you will. So I want to welcome people to this special meeting of the school committee. I'm going to make a brief statement and then we're going to have some comments from the superintendent and the manager. I will say this is an extraordinary time. The recent action to temporarily close the schools is a step taken here in neighboring communities across the state and indeed across the nation. Education is at the core of our mission, but that cannot happen without protecting the health and safety of our students, staff, school families, and communities. The actions have taken, the actions taken have followed extensive deliberation with other districts and health professionals. We apologize for the disruption that this creates in family life, but appreciate your support in these very challenging times. So the superintendent is going to speak about the recent closure for the schools and talk in more detail about that and what that's going to look like over the coming two weeks. And then, as I mentioned, the manager also is going to speak about the events and actions taken on the, within town departments. So, Dr. Galston.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Before I delve into some of the details surrounding the school closures, I just want to send out my deepest appreciation for the entire Watertown Public Schools community in terms of really showing deep understanding of the need for calling off school, but also rallying together and offering support and really trying to figure out how it is that we're going to navigate the next several weeks as we continue to learn more about how the coronavirus is going to impact our schools and our community. So I'm just going to go over a few of the details that we'll be sending out to families a little bit later on today. And then, you know, if there are questions that arise, we provided an email address in our correspondence to email our special student services director, Kathy Damaris, and we'll answer as many questions as we can. But as you know, based on communications that have gone out to the community over the past several weeks, we have been working very diligently on how to deal with the novel coronavirus, which is now known more commonly as COVID-19, 2019, I learned that today, and its impact on our community, and appreciate your patience as we manage this rapidly changing situation. As you know, we made the decision to close all Watertown Public Schools for two weeks starting today, and we will remain closed through Friday, March 27th. So as the commissioner has indicated that we only need to make up days until our 185th day, which is a little complicated, that this year, our last day of school in theory will be June 22nd, and as such, we are considering the first four days of this closure as being school closure days akin to snow days. And as such, faculty and staff are not expected to work. That's very important, and please realize that we're taking those four days to develop our plans and to make sure that we're ready to communicate effectively and fully with the community as to what our next steps are in terms of continuing our students' learning experiences. So we'll be in continual contact with our families about how we will work together to support our children and keep learning alive outside of our school buildings. I just want to reemphasize and reinforce the importance of social distancing and personal hygiene. The reason for school closures isn't because we were necessarily concerned of a COVID-19 case within our school. Yes, we did have one confirmed case in our community, but really it's more about making sure that we provided the opportunity of social distancing, considering that schools, our smallest school is 300 large, and as we just heard from the governor today, that we are not supposed to be gathering in groups of 250 or more. So we felt that based upon the numbers of students that we had in our school and the growing concerns with COVID-19, that it was an important move to make. And so since this is all about social distancing, we encourage our students when they're at home to play outside, but only to play with siblings when possible. And in order for our actions to be really helpful in stopping the spread of this virus, that we must work together to engage in the social distancing to slow the spread of COVID-19. So this means that, and please listen, that students should not be visiting friends, they shouldn't be gathering at playgrounds or parks, or meeting in public spaces such as the library or the mall. Remember that the most effective way to combat COVID-19 is with proper hand washing, covering your coughs and sneezes with a tissue or elbow, and practicing social distancing. That is what we know and that is what we're practicing. And as always, and we've tried to reinforce this a lot, is if you are ill, please stay home, you know, no matter what, at this point in time. So we've been meeting constantly as a leadership team to try to troubleshoot some of the issues that are certainly going to be facing our community. But one thing that we wanted to provide information on is food support for students. So we have worked with our school nutrition department to develop essential services for students experiencing food scarcity and food insecurity, to have access to a food station during the closure. That will comply with social isolation expectations, but still allow our students to eat. So we are going to set up a Watertown Public Schools food station, and it will be located at Watertown High School, but it will be for pickup outside of the faculty, in the faculty parking lot, which is off of Barnard Avenue, which is behind the high school. So please do not try to enter through the main door or the gym door. It's actually down Columbia Street and then to the right, and then behind where the faculty park, there's a door, and we will be providing our meals that way. And the time for food distribution will be Monday through Friday from 11 to 1:00. So at that point in time, you may stop by. We'll have somebody stationed at the door, and we will be able to provide our families with as much lunches, as many lunches as they need to take care of their families. So that's really important. And I said before, you know, this is ideally targeted for people who might be experiencing food scarcity, but at this point in time, knowing the conditions in our grocery stores and our supermarkets, this might apply to a lot of our families. So please take advantage of this opportunity that we're providing to the community, our school community. If you can't make it to the food station, I will send out an email to families, but we have an email address, which is basically lunchline@watertown.k12ma.us. And that is, if you email us and you're not able to make it to the high school location, we will make sure that we provide you either with another alternative for drop-off or that we're able to actually bring the lunches to your, to your house. So that's important as well. We don't want anyone to go without lunch and possibly breakfast as well. So please take advantage of that whenever needed. And as always, we will provide information about the Watertown Food Pantry, which intends to provide food for families as well throughout this time. So I know one of the questions that's on everybody's mind is about how it is that we are going to keep learning alive. We had a conference call this morning with the Commissioner of Education, which, you know, we, we know this is evolving, but there are a couple of things that we came away with from the conference, and we knew a little bit going into this. So one of the things that he stressed and emphasized, that we are no longer at this point in time trying to meet learning requirements of 900 or 990 hours or the 180 days. Rather, we are just trying to keep learning alive for our students. So, you know, as we move along, this is important to realize that this year might be unique from other years in terms of that 180-day requirement, but it is our intention to make sure that we continue learning even when school is closed. So the Watertown Public Schools leadership team will be meeting on Monday, March 16th, to further plan and provide guidance. So we will be providing families with guidance regarding keeping learning alive as we experience school closure in the next two weeks. These experiences are not mandatory and are not considered instruction. In the interest of ensuring equity of access, we are not allowed to provide any digital remote learning opportunities to replace in-person teaching during this closure, per the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education. But we will endeavor, no matter what, across the board, to provide multiple resources for our students and families to access during the school closure. So this information, as I said before, will be provided to families after this first four days, as we go about the process of planning and collecting all of the resources that we will provide to families. We will make sure that our resources are available in various modalities, and will depend on the grade level of the students. We do know that we are a one-to-one computing district, nine to 12 for sure, and six to eight as well in our middle schools, and we'll be working on a plan to distribute Chromebooks to all of our middle school students over the coming days as well. But once again, the point of that is not necessarily to provide direct instruction, but rather to provide resources for students to keep their learning moving while we are experiencing the school closure. And I can, I'll just say that this past Wednesday, during our department meeting time, we gave all of our teachers the opportunity to work together in grade-level teams or departments to begin to collect and brainstorm about what sort of resources and opportunities we would be able to provide students. So we are well on our way to compiling those, those opportunities and provide it to our families in the coming days. So just, I want to make sure to emphasize that student homework grades, test scores and such will not be negatively impacted by this pause in school closure. That's really important to emphasize. We will address these concerns when we return to normal class operations, but we know that our educators and families have questions, and that we want to let you know that our leadership team is currently working through those issues to determine the appropriate next steps. We don't have all the answers as of right now, as of today, but certainly in the next three days, that is what we're going to do, is to provide the answers that I know people are looking for. But please rest assured that we will have a plan for continuing our student learning in the absence of school. So I just want to emphasize as well again that stu, and this was just a correction from the message that I sent out, for our students who are attending an out-of-district special education placement, if that school is open, then school will be in session for children as scheduled, and transportation will be provided at this moment in time. I think it's ever-evolving, and we will continue to update our special education families as we learn of either more closures or different plans, but that is the plan for right now. So I know it's very disappointing. I can only imagine, I have, I've shared with probably the community that I have three, I have four children. One is in college and will be coming home and taking his last term of education at home. But I have three children in public schools as well, and I know that it's very disappointing, whether they be, whether our students be in sporting activities, or whether they're in plays, or musicals, or just many of the activities, including SATs. I mean, a lot of things have been canceled, and, you know, our high, our middle school musical. But I want to emphasize that the reason for this is that sometimes community health is prioritized, and that's what's happening right now. And, you know, we hope that we will be able to at some point return to normalcy and maybe continue with some of these activities, but I do want to recognize that I am sure that there are children and families that are right now very disappointed in not being able to do many of the things that they wanted to. So we'll, we'll work to reschedule events as possible when school reopens, but we understand that there's going to be lots of questions around AP classes and college application deadlines, and the prom, and graduation, and other special events. But at this point, point in time, in this very beginning, we are not able to answer questions around that. But as soon as we have more clear understanding of what will happen well into the future, then we will be able to communicate that to families. But we do know that there's a lot of questions around that. I can say that our students will graduate, but, you know, how that's going to look or when that will be, we will let you know. The Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association has moved the spring sports start to the earliest date of March 30th, 2020. So all tryouts and practices are postponed across the state. So that is something that we hopefully will, once again, when and if schools reopen, be able to continue. I want to make sure that you know that the central office is currently open, so if you have a concern or if you have a need, I would suggest calling first, but that we are available if needed in our central offices, which is located in the Phillips Administration Building. Please note that our school buildings are technically closed for business, but if you do need to get into the building, please contact your school's principal, because the reason again for the closure is social isolation, but that doesn't mean that you can't access the building if you need to. So just make sure you reach out to your principals. We had buildings open this morning, but I realize that not every family was able to get in and get backpacks or materials that might be in the school, so we want to make sure that we provide our families with access to get whatever is needed within our schools. As stated in my, my community updates, all rental use of our school facilities and, you know, public at-large use of the facilities at this point in time, evening and community events have been canceled. We can't have those events in our buildings if the whole point is social distancing, as well as the fact that we are no longer staffing regularly, our custodial staff potentially in the evening. There might be custodians there, but not enough to be able to run these programs that we have in the evening. As I stated before, and I'll state it again, we are asking our students not to congregate and to remain as isolated as possible within their families as they can go, as they can, so assisting in slowing the virus spread. Once, as always, I say, student-staff safety is my primary concern and the goal of all of our decision-making, and that is why we have taken these steps, and I, and I'm, again, appreciate all of the understanding of the community and as we all navigate this very uncertain and certainly uncharted territory. So, you know, this is rapidly changing. We plan to provide updates for our families on a very regular basis. I'll be sending out basically a summary of what I just said this evening, this afternoon, I don't know, evening or afternoon, to all of our families, and then contact again on Monday, and then as we have more information and more clarity, we'll be, make sure that we communicate that with our families as well. We have a website, a section on our website that's dedicated to coronavirus updates. It has important links to the Department of Public Health and other governmental agencies, as well as information just in general about, that people might be interested in, and that is where we put our communications and our updates. You just have to go to the main site of the Watertown Public Schools, and you'll be able to access that as well. So thank you very much for providing us this opportunity to go over what we have in place for our schools and, there we go.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Galston. We, when the communication that we sent out to, to families the other day mentioned that if they wanted to email a question in, so could you give them that, give them the email address again, just if they want to?
Sure. It's long, but I will. So it's, um, it's-
Do that, please.
Kathleen, so K-A-T-H-L-E-E-N dot Dismaris, that's where it gets a little tricky, so So once again, it's Kathleen Dismaris, Kathleen dot Dismaris at watertown.k12ma.us. And we do have some questions that we can review, but I think that we'll save that till the later part.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay. And then also, now the, the town manager, want, give him an opportunity to speak to some of the changes that are happening in the town administration, town services. Okay, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Honorable School Committee. Within the last 15, 20 minutes, we issued a statement on the coronavirus, COVID-19. That's been placed on the town's website, along with putting out a notify me. I'd like to take the opportunity, I want to thank the Council President Sideris and school committee member, Chairman, Mr. Portz, allowing me to speak with the, with the fact that this meeting is being televised this afternoon to the members of the Watertown community. So on March 10th, as you all know, Governor Baker declared a state emergency in Massachusetts to support the Commonwealth's response to the outbreak of the coronavirus. The state of emergency allows the Commonwealth to take action, take certain actions that may be necessary to manage the coronavirus outbreak. As a follow-up, in accordance with guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, in an effort to balance the ability to continue to provide important services and to protect the health and safety of the residents of Watertown, the town is taking the following measures at this time. These measures could be extended or shortened as the town received additional guidance from the Commonwealth. The Town of Watertown is moving forward with these measures in an effort to prevent and slow the spread of COVID-19. The measures are as follows. As Dr. Galston just mentioned, and as you, as you are aware, Dr. Galston sent a communication to our community last night informing that all Watertown Public Schools would close starting this afternoon through Friday, March 27. The Watertown Council on Aging Senior Center is closed for activities and exercise classes starting today through the end of March. The Senior Center bus will continue to operate for grocery shopping, and will continue to serve seniors with appointments for medical transportation, AARP counseling, I'm sorry, tax services, shine counseling, and case management. Walk-in service for senior parking permits is suspended until further notice, but please call the Senior Center for renewal and purchase information. As follow-up to Dr. Galston's comment about the Watertown Food Pantry, that will continue to operate in its regular schedule from Tuesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and Thursdays from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 80 Mount Auburn Street. The Senior Center staff will be available to answer your questions and to help connect you to resources you need. You can call the Senior Center between 8:30 to, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, at 972-6490 for updates and further information. The next measure is that the Watertown Free Public Library will be closed starting tomorrow, Saturday, March 14 through Friday, March 27. The next measure is that all programs offered by the Watertown Recreation Department will be canceled through Sunday, March 29. Field and picnic permits starting today through March 29 will also be canceled. The next measure is that the John A. Ryan Arena will be closed starting tomorrow morning and through Friday, February, March 27. Town Hall will remain open during normal business hours for residents to access essential services. We ask that residents utilize online services or utilize telephone or email to contact offices to the extent possible. Boards and commission meetings will continue on as-needed basis. We ask all residents who need to visit Town Hall, practice social distancing, which is at six feet. As the town takes these measures this afternoon, there may be additional measures forthcoming. As the town does that and the schools does that, we also ask you to please continue to take the following actions. Just one of them is right there, to limit the spread of COVID-19. The first one would be practice social distancing within public spaces, try to remain at least six feet from others. Number two is stay home if you're sick and avoid close contact with others. The third item is cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze and use a tissue or an inner elbow, knot your hands. And lastly, wash your hands with soap and warm water or use an alcohol-based sanitizing gel. Another key thing I wanted to mention today to the residents of the community, the Town of Watertown Emergency Management Team is meeting daily to monitor the developments in the outbreak of the coronavirus. We have used these meetings to keep an organized flow of information and to develop strategies to best respond to the needs of our community. We will continue to update the community through the Watertown Health Department's webpage, www.watertown-ma.gov backslash 965 coronavirus. And when drafting this this afternoon, a discussion with the Council President Sideris, and thank you again to Mr. Portz for allowing me to speak, well, within the last hour developing these remarks, President Trump spoke to the nation and declared that the coronavirus pandemic, a national, declared a national emergency. The president stated that the emergency would open up to $50 billion for state and local governments to respond to the outbreak. The situation continues to evolve rapidly, and we will continue to keep our community up to date with credible, science-based information and guidance. We recommend the following resources, which are updated daily. I won't read the actual, the links, if you will, but they are as follows. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health Resource Page, the Center for Disease Control Information, and the Watertown Health Department Coronavirus Waste Page. So again, to members of the community, members of the Honorable School Committee, I appreciate the opportunity to make this statement to the community now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let me open it up at this time for questions or comments from the committee. Anyone that has questions or wish to speak? Opportunity?
I'll wait.
Mark?
I'll wait till the end.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, I think there's a question here that wants to be asked, if the playgrounds will be roped off or closed to help prevent people from congregating or using them?
If the playgrounds?
So the question is whether the playgrounds will be open or closed?
Sorry.
Yeah, you got to get the mic.
I don't want to be charming, but okay. Um, yes, if they'll be roped off or closed to prevent people from using them. That's just a question that was called in here.
Yeah, actually, we, we have the recreation director here could speak to that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the leadership. At this time, we will not be, you know, closing the, the tawt lots or the playgrounds or the fields at this point. The one thing we will do, we won't, we will not be putting any lights on, on any courts or any, on any fields, but at this point, we're not going to be roping off any of the fields or the tawt lots.
I mean, I, I would add, I think it's the opportunity for exercise, just not doing it in social groups is the point there. I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other questions or comments from committee members? I will say one note here that at this point in time, for the school committee, we plan to continue having school committee meetings. We do have a, a meeting coming up on, at the, on March 23rd at the middle school, and we will, we will continue with that meeting. It will be broadcast. The auditorium has live cable, so we will be broadcast live there and so people can watch it on cable. So intention is to continue those meetings.
And a question. And this isn't something I, I just put this out there, I know you can't answer it yet, but there was a question that I received yesterday about athletics, and assuming we're back, oh, thank you, assuming we're back in school in two weeks, are there any discussions at the state level, MIA level regarding the season continuing, or are there any other guidance? It's just, there's questions out there from, from high school.
Right. Um, I, I will make sure that the, our athletic director, Ryan Murphy, communicates out to his athletes, student athletes, but I think that the hope is that if we're able to open, that's why the delay till March 30th, and then, yes, we would have to consider probably shortening seasons or whatever, but that's, that's the goal. But I, as everybody knows, this is a day-to-day, we use the word often evolving, and that's because that's exactly what it's doing, and I, I think it's, it's, we're not ready to make a statement about what the season's going to look like.
Great. Thank you.
Other than that, it's clearly, I think, postponed?
Yes.
Till the 30th.
Till the 30th, correct. Right. Other question?
I have a question.
Yes, Amy.
I think it was stated in your email, but I just want to be clear that there was a, we've, we've taken the two weeks until the 27th. Is there a possibility, though, that families should be aware, like, they thought they could travel, that you could call back school on during that time as well?
So we, we left that as an, as an, as an opportunity, if that were to be the case, but I think that I would not recommend that a family plans a, a two-week vacation right now. We're, you know, definitely committed throughout, through this week for sure, but, I mean, I, I can't imagine it isn't for the two weeks. I can't say what the future holds, but our plan is to be closed through the 27th.
Okay.
And I would add, even at that point, I think there'll be a reassessment here and across the state as to whether we open after the 27th or whether we don't. Again, this, you know, this is certainly an evolving situation. I think everybody understands that. Other questions? Are there other questions that come in? Kathy?
Yes, so most of the questions that came in were answered. There are a couple that weren't answered that I'll, I'll address now. So one of those questions that was, will pre-K tuition or preschool tuition be refunded, modified? And the answer to that is yes, that, that will be taken care of. And I also wanted to mention, this wasn't asked, but I can answer it, that's the same for the extended day programming, for, for families that have paid for extended day programming that's not taking place. We will make sure that the families are compensated for that.
And can I just add one thing? So just as a, as a clarification too, because of the fact that we're considering the, the first four days, so up through Wednesday, as being, again, like, snow days, because we, we will have to make those days up, that it would kick in after that, on that Thursday, in terms of how we would prorate, because we do anticipate that we'll be utilizing those five extra days after, and so there, there will be extended day for those five days. That's a little confusing, but we will make sure that we are taking care of our families and refunding what is necessary and appropriate.
Thanks, Kendra.
Yes, Kendra.
And I just want to reiterate, I, you answered this question when you spoke, but families should be expecting, in terms of keeping learning alive, families should be expecting information really starting to the beginning or middle of next week-
Yes, yes.
-regarding kind of specific things that they can do at home.
Right. So might I mention that I think that we, we can all keep learning alive, even starting today, in terms of, reading is the number one best way to keep learning moving. So, you know, pick up even an old favorite and read it again, or, you know, whatever it might be, but certainly I would highly recommend that, don't, don't wait until the middle of the week. Start thinking about what you can do within your home and reading-
week, start thinking about what you can do within your home, and reading is the easiest way to do that. You know, for younger children, it's gross motor skills, you know, making sure you continue to play. You know, with the older students, it's, it's really getting deep with online resources in terms of reading and news and information that's publicly available and easily consumed.
And we also, we also have a lot of great resources that the kids use in the schools already.
Yes.
That at the beginning of the year, parents got those passwords and resources, so there's a lot of things that have, that we already can, can continue to use.
Yes, I already, instruction is the, the key one, K to eight, so all students have access to that at this point in time.
And, and online through the library, we mentioned also?
Yes, the library is a great resource for audiobooks, even though it will be closed, but they have a great selection of audiobooks and ebooks that you can download through Hoopla as well as, there's another...
Libby.
What's that?
Libby.
Libby, another, there's a few, a few services through the library that are free, and all you need is a library card, and you can just log in and have an account and download audiobooks as well as ebooks, which is a great resource.
Kathy had a few more questions.
Few more questions. Another question was, is there a contact person if families are experiencing difficulties regarding food or other issues? And we'll put this into our letter that goes in writing to families, but it's Brandon Rabbit, who's our Food Services Director, who would be the contact person for food. We're also setting up an, an email, lunchline underscore, I'm sorry, lunch underscore line at watertown.k12 MA.us. Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll put that, is what?
It's lunch underscore?
Lunch underscore line, yes. And we'll put that again in the newsletter, and that will be if anyone is unable to get to the places where we are, I'm sorry, the high school where we're delivering the meals, we'll, we'll help families out in that regard. And in terms of other issues that aren't food-related, we have our Community Outreach Social Worker, Bethany Kiro. Again, she's not expected to work until Thursday, but she has already, you know, reached out to DeeDee and myself to ask if she can be of any assistance, so she's going to be of help as well. And you can always give out my email address as well if families are struggling. Overwhelmingly, many families contacted to ask what they can do to help, so you know, asking what, you know, where should we donate food for families that need food? Is there a volunteer program that's set up for, for folks that are in need of help? We don't have any volunteer programs set up at this time, but we are asking families to go ahead and donate any food, donations they have directly to the Watertown Food Pantry. There was a question whether we have, whether there's going to be a drop-off center for, for children, for childcare. Again, that's not something that we're able to provide through the Watertown Public Schools. And then the last questions that I'm able to field, you know, immediately to parents involve students who have IEPs or individual education programs, and they're asking, you know, what about services that we miss? What if my, what if my students, you know, lose ground in terms of their goals? So currently, because there's no school for anyone, this works just as any other school break, like the summer break or the winter break works, so there, we don't make up for any services that are missed. But what we do is when we return to school, teachers and the related service providers look at how the kids are doing. We pay attention to how they're progressing towards their goals, and if we see any sort of regression that, that we're concerned about, we would then have the IEP team convene to discuss whether some compensatory services were needed at that point in time. And everything else was covered, I think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
I had a, a parent ask, they, they stopped by school this morning and needed to pick up their child's medication, but there wasn't any access to that medication, so how will they access that medication in the meantime?
So we will be messaging that as well in our communication that goes out tonight. The nurses have to unlock those, so we're going to ask them to communicate with me if they need to access their medication, and we'll arrange that by appointment for the nurses to, to release those.
Yes, Mark?
Thank you. Back to part of the discussion about meetings. The School Building Committee had on March 19th scheduled the forum at the Hosmer School, that's been canceled. They also had a School Building Committee meeting on the 26th at the high school for the high school, that's been canceled. April 2nd for the Kind of School has also been canceled, because we had anticipated that those would be larger groups of people. I, I just want the, the community to understand that we're not going to have those meetings right now. We will get to them at some point, but we want to wait to see what happens in this very fluid situation. I will say, and as the School Committee Chair said about school committee meetings, all other meetings that I would be part of, or the council would be part of, and potential subcommittees are scheduled to continue unless we hear otherwise. And I think it's important that people understand that we're still trying to conduct business without having large groups of people around and practicing all of the measures that everybody's put out there. I, I also just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Superintendent Galston, Manager Driscoll, the administration. As an elected official here, I'm very comfortable with this approach, and I think it's prudent, and I think you've all, you all should be commended for doing a great job on the fly on something that was very unexpected. So I, as one of the elected officials in this community, I'm proud to say Watertown's response is excellent, and I'm comfortable with it, and I think the community should be happy that we're taking these approaches. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Anyone else wish to, other questions or?
I just have a, I just have a concern about us meeting at the middle school while we're not in school session, so I just think maybe we should postpone that and come here because...
Yeah, yeah, they, yes. I'm sorry, I would say yes. I think the middle school would like that as well.
Yeah, because we're usually showcasing something.
Right. They, they're not going to showcase, they already talked about that, so I told them not to worry, that they would not have to showcase that evening and that we would either meet there or meet here, but not have that as a showcase.
So our meeting on the 23rd will be back here in Town Hall?
Yeah.
Which I assume would be, okay, I mean, the building will be open.
Yes, right now it's going to be open. The manager said we're not closing.
Okay. Any, any other question? One other question I had, just to reiterate, Dr. Galston, and you mentioned this, and I know, I don't think it's definite yet, but for, for a family that's kind of looking into the future, planning, it seems that the most likely scenario is that the, the school year would go to the 185th scheduled day?
Yes.
That's the most likely scenario?
Yes.
Which is?
June 22nd.
June 22nd. Okay, so that's the 180th, so that's, and I think it's clear that it will not go beyond that.
That is the guidance that we've gotten from the commissioner, yes.
Right, okay. And then the other question which some people might have would be, what does this mean for April Vacation Week?
So we will assess that as we get a little bit clearer and closer to that timeframe. It is, given the flexibility from the state in terms of making updates, we've, in the past, it's when we've had pretty intense winters that, because you had to make up those days, because it was before the March 31st timeframe. Then people were scrambling to figure out how to make that up, and when we talked about extended days or shortening passing periods or using vacations, with the, the commissioner's flexibility, that would be something that wouldn't be required, but it'd be something that we might consider just for educational soundness, but...
Right.
It's a little different than normal, but it's always hard to think about vacations, so we'll, we'll tackle that when we get there.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let me just close, I wanted to, to join in, in Mr. Mark Sideris's comments about the thanks to the administration, both on the school side and certainly on the town side, and you know, I've had conversations with Dr. Galston over the last few days. It's been a, a very challenging experience, keeping track of what other schools are doing and, but always, I think, with the, the eye and the intent on kind of what's the best for safety and the health of the community, for the students, for the staff, and thank you. And I also want to iterate, reiterate the point that was made, even though the next couple of weeks are not ones where students are going to be kind of tested or assessed, I think the, the phrase of keep learning alive is a good one, and I, I hope that at all grade levels, families can work with the students, their children, to do that, to keep learning alive, read a book and whatever else can be done, I think is great.
Lily has any questions?
Lily, Lily, did you have any questions? Sorry.
Oh, I, I've been posting my questions on...
Oh, okay.
We've been asking for her.
Okay, great. All right, thanks, Lily.
She's posting them.
All right, okay.
Clever.
Again, back to our agenda, next meeting is on March 23rd, we'll be here for the school committee. Is there any new business? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
All I just want to say once again is thank you to my team.
Okay.
Thank you to the teachers, thank you to the students, thank you to everybody, because it's been a monumental team effort to keep learning alive.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Lily.
After your turn. I forgot about the question.